Good evening and welcome to this April 23rd edition of the Norfolk Select Board Meeting. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I am the Chair and I am joined by my fellow Board members Jim Leehan and Anita Mecklenburg. To start off our meeting this evening, we'll be going into Executive Session and to that point, I do state that the Select Board will be entering into Executive Session to consider three separate matters and the Board will convene an open session at the conclusion of the Executive Session. Anita?
I request a motion for the Board to convene Executive Session pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, subsection 21a3 to discuss strategy with regard to litigation in the matter of Zerzwitch versus Norfolk CVA and to discuss collective bargaining with the clerical employees and the DPW and to approve executive session minutes.
I will second.
Hearing a second, we hear further discussion. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
We will return back into open session at the conclusion of Executive Session.
And we are back in open session, coming out of executive session and jumping right into our agenda for this evening. Justin, you want to give us a quick outline of what we're going to be talking about?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You have an item to accept the donation of a tree, approval of a road event for Ride for Food, vote to approve the use of Town Hill for the Lions Field of Flags, as well as the dedication ceremony, consider a proposed increase in the DPW solid waste rates, a PFAS update, as well as final budget reviews from our building and COA departments. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. So I jumped over one thing. I'm sorry. If everybody could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll knock that out first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everybody. So our first item this evening is our public comment period, where anybody is able to join the board to talk for about three minutes for items that fall within the purview of the town administrator or the select board. Do we have anybody interested in sharing this evening? To the one person in the audience, it doesn't look like it. Moving on to item number two, the vote to accept the donation of a tree, Justin.
Asking the board to accept a donation of a tree, the person wants to remain anonymous. They're working with the tree warden. If the board is interested in accepting a donation, I would just say that you accept it under the condition that you find a suitable placement with the tree warden. We appreciate the donation. It's in honor of a spouse, but they do want to remain anonymous.
And I imagine that the location for said tree would be in line with whatever planning is going on for the future of Town Hill, not put somewhere and then we have to...
Not necessarily Town Hill. I thought it had occurred to me, maybe the veterans' section of the cemetery, possibility, but there are a couple of spots that I had in mind.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. And the type of tree?
Not sure yet. I haven't talked to the donation or donator, so I wanted to work with them to see the size and what type, what their overall thought was, and then kind of plan accordingly.
Well, I encourage you to think about a tree that's native to the area.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No. No, just to thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Blair, anything else you want to add?
None whatsoever.
Fantastic. In that case, I would take a motion to accept the donation of a tree.
I move that we accept the donation of a tree.
Second.
Hearing a second, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And it's unanimous vote. Thank you, anonymous donor. Our next item this evening is to vote to approve a road event for the Ride for Food on Sunday, October 6, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Justin, anything else for us?
Nope. Just this event is over a 50-mile ride, and they are cutting through Norfolk via Holbrook Street. If the board approves this road event, this has to be conditioned based on them receiving a police detail. They are in the process of working with our police department on that.
Very good. Questions needed?
None whatsoever.
I will move to accept the road event for Ride for Food on Sunday, October 6, subject to full police approval.
Second.
Hearing a second, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And as unanimous, thank you. Our next item this evening is to vote to approve the use of Town Hill for the Norfolk Lions Field of Flags, and then for the Field of Flags dedication ceremony. Justin, any other background for us here?
Nope. Just the Lions' request to utilize. This is an annual event, as the board is aware and the community is aware, to honor veterans and public safety. No concerns on our end.
It really is a fantastic site for those who haven't had the opportunity to see it yet. It's a thousand flags, exactly, right, Jim?
It is, a thousand flags.
And we look forward to going to help them set it up as well. Any questions from the board on the approval of these events?
Yep.
Oh, I just bought my flag.
See that? Very nice. Thank you. In that case, I will take a motion to vote to approve both events on Town Hill.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next item this evening is to vote to approve a proposed increase in DPW solid waste rates effective for FY '25. Justin?
Yes. As the board is aware, we had discussed this at our March 19 select board meeting as part of the DPW budget review, where Mr. Crane outlined some proposed rate increases at the transfer station. The board had indicated they wanted to take this up at a later matter. In your packet, you have the memo in the background regarding those solid waste rates. I don't know if you want to hear from Blair any further, but he is here in case you do want to hear from...
Can you test off my neurons? Did we push it off to give the public an opportunity to comment?
If memory serves, I believe we pushed it off because we didn't have everybody here when we were discussing it last night.
That, as well as because it was part of the budget review, it was in the discussion items category, and you also did want the public to have a chance to chime in. We did not receive any feedback, at least in the select board's office. Blair?
No.
Yep.
Jim, do you have any additional questions on the proposed price increases?
No, I do not.
None whatsoever?
None on my end as well. So in that case, I would take a motion to approve the proposed increases for DPW solid waste rates effective for FY '25.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
So we have about 13 minutes or so. Should we jump into our PFAS update? Blair?
Sure.
Good with you?
Absolutely.
Please come and join us.
I will try to keep it brief. Lots of digestion, though.
[laughing]
As you can imagine.
I was afraid of it.
Well...
No pun intended.
Absolutely. So I will try to keep it somewhat high level, but I also wanted to be complete. Obviously, this is a topic that interests the majority of residents in this town. It's a significant health issue, so I'd like to just kind of give you an overall view of the entirety of where we've been since PFAS has become an issue. Beginning in early April of 2020, the Norfolk Water System initiated a PFAS sampling program with the assistance of our engineering firm and water treatment operator. Although the new well source under construction on Holbrook Street had been tested for PFAS prior to this point in time, the other sources had not been tested, and we began to do so in order to be proactive in establishing a baseline of data. Later that year, in October of 2020, Mass DEP established new drinking water regulations that set a maximum contamination level of 20 parts per trillion for the sum of chemicals known as PFAS-6. Public water suppliers serving less than 10,000 people were required to begin initial testing on April 1 of 2022, and we were fortunate enough to have already begun the process six months prior. Throughout 2021, the water system developed a PFAS reporting protocol and tracking system for data and trend analysis, with results that were all within the new limits set by Mass DEP of 20 parts per trillion. With this data, continued review and compliance, Mass DEP determined that the Spruce Road Source would require monthly sampling, while Gold Street and Holbrook Water Sources would only require annual sampling moving forward. In December of 2022, as part of our ongoing plan to prepare for a possible regulatory limit reduction, the Norfolk Water Division took the proactive step of rehabilitating the active well at the Gold Street site, allowing for increased pumping capacity, which we believed would be needed if the Spruce Road Source became noncompliant, requiring action. A year ago, during the spring of 2023, we attended a webinar hosted by Mass DEP where the proposed national maximum contaminant levels and maximum contaminant level goals for PFAS and drinking water were presented. While keeping in mind that these new national levels were possibly being proposed and not yet enacted, the Water Division once again took proactive steps to analyze the water system with yet even more scrutiny. Shortly thereafter, while having reviewed the proposed and probable EPA regulations along with PFAS data collected to date, it was determined that if implemented, the Spruce Road well site would not be Road well site would not be able to meet the new proposed limits for PFAS, while Gold Street and Holbrook would meet the new requirements for maximum contaminant levels. After consulting with numerous industry professionals and with severe scrutiny of the data on hand, we unanimously determined that the most viable and cost-effective solution may very well be to shut down the Spruce Road well site, which has been yielding less and less water annually for years and is also high in iron and manganese. This possibly has led us to take steps and to look for and develop new water sources. We have been discussing possible locations for a new water source, with a couple being vetted for suitability currently. That brings us to where we are today. Earlier this month, the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, announced the final version of the National Primary Drinking Water Regulation, establishing contaminant levels for six PFAS. Within this rule, to establishing levels for the original six PFAS, the EPA established a hazard index for maximum containment levels, or contaminant levels, excuse me, for mixtures of four PFAS in particular to account for combined levels of these particular PFAS in drinking water. Also, the federal MCLs cover two additional PFAS that were not included with the current Mass DEP PFAS-6, and will also need to be regulated going forward. As you can imagine, this is complex. As an added bit of context here, I'd also like to add that, as stated in the webinar from the EPA today, PFAS violations are considered when running an annual average, when the running annual average exceeds the MCL and not a single test, as we have had an occasional high test here and a high test there, but they look at an overall annual body. I thought this was good information for context, as our data is scrutinized moving forward. The national timeline for compliance is for the initial monitoring to be complete within the next three years and full compliance with all maximum contaminant levels within the next five. That being said, Mass DEP has also released an announcement stating that states are required to establish regulations that are no less stringent than the federal standards within two years of promulgation of the federal MCL, with the possibility of an extension of two more years. The current Massachusetts regulations, which established a PFAS-6 MCL of 20 parts per trillion, are less stringent than the new federal MCLs and will end up having to be revised. Mass DEP will be proposing amendments to its PFAS regulations in the coming months to be at least as stringent as the EPA MCLs, and will be holding public hearings to receive input on this proposal. Currently, although the Spruce Road well site is able to meet the current Mass DEP MCLs, the site will most likely not be able to comply with the EPA MCL and the goals for PFAS in drinking water. Added to this, the Spruce Road well has a limited daily yield and, as I said, high manganese and high iron levels. Gold Street well and the Holbrook Street well both fall well below current Mass DEP MCLs and will meet the requirements for EPA MCLs, but some work will be required to reach the goal of 0.0 parts per trillion set by the EPA for PFAS in drinking water. In conclusion, this is a very complex and unbelievably important issue for the residents of Norfolk. I believe, and my staff believe, that we recognize this to be an issue that certainly needs to be kept close at hand, and it's going to take a lot of work to get where we need to go. We've been working hard on a daily basis and believe that we're one step ahead at this point, and we'd like to stay that way. We still have a lot of work to do, and testing continues as the regulations evolve for years to come, but rest assured that we will continue to work with all of the resources available to us to remain in compliance with these standards and to provide safe drinking water to the residents of Norfolk. That's all I have.
Thank you, Blair. That was incredibly comprehensive and answered just about every question that I had, but I'll open it up to the board for any other questions before we move on.
No, I think it was comprehensive, and I was wondering if we could have a full copy of it in the minutes?
Absolutely.
So that that is documented for anybody who didn't have the pleasure of our company in person.
Absolutely.
A couple of questions. Well, you got the first, which I'd like to have a copy of that, because retaining it specifically as you wrote it would be impossible, so if you could send that, I'd appreciate it. When do you anticipate shutting down the well?
I would like, at this point, I would like to wait until Mass DEP catches up with the feds.
Timing roughly?
We actually were, we were on a webinar this afternoon with the federal EPA, and they still don't have a timeline, and Mass is going to have to decide when that's going to be. I think, in all honesty, I think it's going to take them a couple of months. They've given everybody three years to get into testing and to start down this road, but at this point, there's no timeline. It just came down a couple of days ago, so, from the feds. So we're still in the baby steps here, and we're out in front of it to the point where, you know, we're not panicked like some towns or municipalities would be if this had just dropped on.
But, you know, with the additional wells that we have on Holbrook, and we have five, I think, how many?
Six at Holbrook and two at Gold Street.
So is it illogical to think where we know it does not comply and it has additional issues, that we might want to consider moving as quickly as possible on that?
Yeah, and I think that's where we're at at this point. I think that we can, because Holbrook has six, the town ran on just four with the two at Spruce and the two at Gold Street previous to that. You know, I think one of the issues that we've had over the past few years is that we're going to have to look at water conservation a little harder, and, you know, there have been times where, you know, it's gotten out of hand in the middle of summer during droughts and that sort of thing, but we have, for all intents and purposes, twice the number of wells that we've had up until a couple of years ago.
I know.
Which is a great cushion, but I don't think we should rest on it.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that. But two other questions. I mean, the issue isn't so much conservation, as the towers and the pressure and all of that, and I understand that, but what would happen, let's say, you say we comply with Holbrook at this point in time?
Yes.
And most likely, when the new regulations come out?
Yes.
How extensive is it to fix the problem if we don't?
So right now, both Holbrook and Gold Street fall under the four parts per trillion, which is the new standard. I actually have some data on those, because I thought the question may come up. So currently, the Norfolk average for Gold Street is, the highest one is PFOA, so there's a number of different PFAS. The highest of the six is 2.42.
Okay.
The highest single sample is 3.03. So that kind of gives you an idea of where the average is, where the ceiling is, and so the new regulation is four parts per trillion. So there's a bit of a, that's a pretty good cushion. I found out today that with these extra ones, the extra four that they've added on, that they're still playing around with the formula, and even the formula doesn't make a lot of sense, a little odd, which shouldn't affect this initial conversation. At Holbrook Street, as all non-detects except for one, which is at .95 parts per trillion.
That's good.
So the six wells at Holbrook Street are as close to non-detect as you could possibly be at this point, and Gold Street. So we have, I feel comfortable saying that even with the four parts per trillion, if we were to go down to Gold or to Spruce right now and shut the well off, we would easily be in compliance for four parts per trillion.
You answered my question.
That's not to say I want to rest on that.
No, I'm not suggesting, but it's a good place to start.
We are clearly in a good place if the worst thing we have to do is go shut a well off that has been around since 1949 and is already showing its age. And we've rehabbed it a few times, and, you know, it's clearly an old well that needs to be retired.
Answered my question. Thank you. I would love to get that.
I will make sure that all three of you have a copy.
And the data as well?
Yes. Absolutely.
Just a very short, we have one minute left, so, very short. How do the PFAS get into the drinking water?
I would love, I would love for somebody to have that answer. Obviously, the go-to seems to be firefighting foam, but to be honest with you, there's 10 PFAS here. It could be anything from, it could be, it could be in the fittings of the plastic pipe. It could be anything at the end of the day.
So there's no consumer awareness that we can do to...
Right. There's no rhyme or reason. Everyone seems to point to firefighting foam, but it's pretty hard to, you know, in a rural spot like Norfolk, it's pretty hard to say that that's the reason it's in our water, so.
And that is a huge issue in Norfolk anyway.
Right. Yeah. My original thought was that Holbrook Street is somewhat near the old airport.
Somewhat, yeah.
You know, with the Charles River right there, and so I, you know, that, when this all started to come down in 2020, that was my number-one nightmare, was, oh, boy, here we go. We're investing millions of dollars in a new well at Holbrook Street, and, you know, a mile away is an old airport, and the Charles River flows right towards our source, and so, but worry for naught, apparently, at this point.
So I think you might have indirectly answered this in some of the other contexts of the previous questions, but from your perspective, given the amounts that are being detected at Gold Street and Holbrook right now, you don't see us having to plan for any kind of treatment or anything like that in the near future?
No, I think, with regards to treating, like I said, obviously, Spruce Road, I think, is a dying star. It served this town well for many years, but it's high in PFAS relative. I mean, the Spruce Road, even Spruce Road, the highest one was 5.4. So, I mean, it just barely comes in over at the four trillion, parts per trillion, but it's a dying star. It does have high iron, it has high manganese, and it's been fracked a couple of times. It's just, it's losing its yield, and so I think the way to go here is to let it go and find a new source, which we've been working on anyway. So, you know, as we continue to develop town, I think that finding another source is paramount, and obviously now, that, you know, this is stuff that we didn't have when we went into the Holbrook conversation back in the day.
Yep.
So obviously, any new source is going to have to take this into account as we move forward.
At least it worked out well.
I'll take the luck when I can find it.
I hear you.
At this point, I mean, it is a moving target. The EPA's, the DEP's going to have to revamp to catch up with the feds. Once that happens, I'm sure the timelines will come down, but there's a reason why they gave a 36-month window.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people weren't out in front of this, and so they're going to need that time.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blair.
No problem. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, one last thing before we transition. I know we're going to our joint meeting. One thing I do want to emphasize is that the question is, are we expecting that we might need to allocate resources for further treatment? I think Blair has highlighted what we're not concerned for in the meantime, but we are being proactive about thinking about that. We are actually working, I've spoken with Blair about this, we're joining potentially PFAS litigation to secure some resources for the town, and in that case, I think we should look towards allocating that stuff, towards treatment potential of PFAS. Wanted to give that quickly, because we're not resting on our laurels. I just want to emphasize that, even though we're below the regulations.
The point I was really trying to make is that if you watch the other communities around here that are in literal scramble mode, trying to come up with these incredible sums of money to appropriately treat much higher levels than what you just outlined, I don't want to have us find ourselves in the same position five, six years down the road.
Exactly. That's what DPW is thinking.
And I don't want to give the false sense of security either. It's something we have to be vigilant about and keep looking at and keep testing and keep after it. Franklin's had a problem, Foxborough has a problem, but then there are communities like Rentham that are okay. So even though, you know, there are communities near us that are having an issue, there are also communities that border us that are having no problems at all. So I think it's hit or miss, depends on where your source is, but I think the direction that we need to look at at this point is moving for an additional well as opposed to believing that the sky is falling. Remain vigilant, but, you know, continue on.
That's the key. We don't want to be reactive, because some of these things, we're seeing millions of dollars being spent because they're being reactive. We want to be strategic and proactive about this, so thinking other wells, etc.
We've been proactive ahead of this since day one, and I'd like to stay there.
Fantastic. Thank you so much again, Blair. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sincere apologies to our guests. I know that we're running late. One day, we'll run as efficiently as the school committee does, but we're ready to move into our joint meeting now. So if you would like to come up here and join us, you're more than welcome to do so. I think we have enough chairs. If not, I'm happy to leave.
Pull up some more chairs. Of course.
Do you need us to have name tags to help you guys know who's speaking?
Nice to see you.
Would you like them?
Oh, all right.
Jim, do you want them to have nameplates?
We should ask Andrew if he wants.
Okay, we're good.
No, we're good.
Do you think Andrew wants them for...
I know, well...
Sure plus.
No, but you also sit here for many hours.
You want them?
Hello, everyone.
Thank you for captioning.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
All right, so procedurally, would you like to open your meeting as a school committee first, before we get started?
Sure.
Yes. Sure.
Let's play them with our nameplate. Doing matching games. I'm not efficient, so I apologize, but it's a little...
We've never been this, we've never been this efficient.
Oh, Jen took a five-finger discount on her nameplate for the last school committee.
Oh.
Well played.
Right. I apologize.
Very well played, Jen. By the way, she's this good at KP as well.
I'll send the, I'll send the Bobson. I'm sorry. It was a memory.
I don't have a, okay, well, I'll call the meeting of the Norfolk School Committee to order on April 23, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. We will begin this meeting, as we begin all of our meetings, by reading the mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Can we get a school committee roll call?
Lisa Shelvin.
Grace Locken. Midora Champagne.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Ingrid Lardy.
Victoria Salda.
Okay, so we have no public comment. We have welcome and introductions, I guess, so.
I think we just covered that.
That as well, but, I mean, here we are. I'm the chair of the school committee, Midora Champagne.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Jennifer Nguyen, in her final act as vice chair of the school committee, and then our other steadfast members, Grace, Lisa, and Lauren. So, and I think we all know Dr. Lardy, so those are the introductions.
And I have Becky King.
Yes, is our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction. So, thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate it. This is, I think, the first time we've ever had a full joint meeting with this select board. As you know, we have been, for a number of years since 2017, we have been really studying and trying to understand changing demographics and enrollment patterns in the Norfolk schools. We had an original space study. We've commissioned two different enrollment projection assessments with NESDEC, and we have been in the process of looking at a feasibility study for a school expansion project. I think for the first five or six years that we've had the NESDEC predictions, we were trending very close to the expected enrollment. We were seeing steady but slow growth over that period of time. Post-COVID, in the last two years, we've seen a gap grow between what NESDEC was forecasting and what the actual enrollment in the schools looked like. So last spring, as we were talking about next steps for the feasibility study and for a potential school expansion, we had discussions with the advisory board and again at town meeting, and recommended that we move forward with a new demographic study to try to better understand why the trends were changing and what that would mean for future growth, so that any solution we propose, we know is matched to the expected need in town. So the building, the school building committee, which is comprised of the individuals that you guys appointed, for the community representatives, school committee members, Justin, myself, and we have a couple of consultant people, part of that committee, Matt Malinrich, our facilities director, Bob Bullock, was also available as a consultant for that committee. Their first order of business was to send out a request for proposals and to appoint a new demographer. The building committee unanimously appointed demographic analytic advisors, and they have spent the last eight weeks working on poring through a wide amount of data, much of which was provided through our student information registration system, as well as through the Massachusetts Department of Education, the state of Massachusetts, and they have completed a new demographic study that is in your packet. We just received the final report. So far, it has been just presented to the building committee. So not all of the school committee members have seen the full report nor had the select board. So we felt it was in the best interest, because this impacts everybody, to have a chance for Chris Dick, who is here tonight from DAA, to present their study, their projections, their results, and have an opportunity for both school committee and select board to ask any questions that you might have.
You all got authentic reactions, too. This is great.
All right. Sounds good. So I will turn it over to Chris.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Lardy, and thank you all for having me. I do want to apologize upfront.
Can you turn that volume up a little bit?
I have three young children.
Andrew, were you able to get that a little bit... Andrew, are you able to get that a little bit louder in the room?
Oh.
Thank you.
Are you able to hear us, hear me now?
A little bit higher.
A bit better if you could.
Okay. Let me, is that better?
That's better. Thank you. I'm just the one that can't hear.
It was the same volume, so I don't know.
Andrew did his man something in the background for us.
You've improved our hearing. Thank you.
So I do want to apologize in advance. I have three very young children and our infant is not eating well. One of my two or four-year-old may run into the room. Just want to let you all know if I like turned to the side for a second, that's what's going on. But that's neither here nor there. I'm going to go ahead and share my, share my screen real quick here and talk a little bit about the demographic study that we have done for Norfolk. So before I get started there, I want to talk a little bit about who we are as a company. Demographic Analytics Advisors. I started this company about three, a little over three years ago now. Prior to, prior to doing this.
See you again. How you doing?
Are you guys not able to hear me again?
No, we can hear you just fine. We're just doing a little bit of musical chairs.
Can you hear the?
Ah, fair enough. Sorry. I can't fully see the room right now either, so. Before, and before I started this company, I used to run the area at the Census Bureau that does the population forecasts and projections for the United States. So, you know, my partner in this worked at the Census Bureau for 30 years and was also a state demographer for the state of Ohio. So deep experience in demography and really, you know, focused most of our work now on doing K-12 forecasting. So that's a little bit about us. Let's talk a little bit more about you all. So coming into this project, it was a little different than some projects we do because we were, we knew we were coming in because of some of the concerns with the forecast being a little too high, the last forecast that you all had from NESDEC. So overall, we know that enrollment has generally increased for Norfolk Public Schools over the past decade. However, that recent forecast by NESDEC was slightly higher than the actual outcome over the past two school years coming out of COVID. And we all know that, you know, before you make any decisions based on those forecasts, you were hoping to get a second opinion, basically. So this chart on the right here, you're going to see different charts like this. The red dotted line is the NESDEC forecast and the blue solid line is actual enrollment coming from the Massachusetts Department of Education. So our approach, you know, we came into this and although we're going to do a lot of comparisons to the NESDEC forecasts, we took, you know, we did a completely independent forecast of enrollment from what NESDEC did. We do use some similar methodologies, but we also were a little bit more in-depth in a couple of areas that I'll talk about than NESDEC was. So when forecasting enrollment, we generally want to be looking at changes in a couple of things. First of all, obviously, we want to be looking at historical enrollment trends. We also want to be looking at changes in overall population dynamics, both in the town or school district that we're working in, as well as in the surrounding areas. We also want to be looking at changes in housing dynamics and changes in the market share of public and non-public education. So one issue that consistently looms over the building of enrollment forecasts over the past couple of years is what is the staying power going to be of COVID-19-related impacts? And this could be anything from folks waiting longer periods, maybe red-shirting their five-year-olds, waiting until they're six to go into kindergarten. This could be choosing non-public options for a host of reasons. Or, you know, it could be having folks that are held back more often than they were in the past. There's a host of different things that we need to know about. So in terms of our methodology, and if any of you remember the, you know, remember the NESDEC forecast, there's a similarity here for our baseline. And that is we start by looking really closely at births and what we call grade progression ratios. It's a really fancy term, not even really that fancy, for basically saying, you know, for example, if we have kindergarteners this year, how many of them are first graders this year, how many of them were kindergarteners last year? And the number is just that first grader divided by kindergarteners, a number over one. It means that you have more first graders than you have kindergarteners, number under one, less. After we create that baseline forecast, we want to really be thinking about, are there any impacts of new buildings and the yield of students from those new buildings? We also want to be thinking about the impacts of change in market share and the impacts of COVID-19. So I'm, you know, and I said this when I, when I did the earlier presentation, I am a definite bottom-line-up-front guy. So we're going to start out, we're going to start out at the end. And that's really looking at our forecast compared to NESDEC. And what we did, we didn't just create a public school forecast, we also created a all-students forecast, all students who live in Norfolk. And really what we see here is that overall, the NESDEC kind of K through six forecast, it starts out really close in 21, 22, and starts diverging a little bit. And we'll, we'll talk about what's happening there. And it actually gets really close to the all-students forecast. And then over time, that all-students forecast will continue staying high and NESDEC kind of comes back down. Well, there are a couple of things to note here. There's a shift in non-public enrollment beginning in 2022, 23, and as we'll show, this is based on one inflated cohort. It's the kindergarteners from 22 to 23. We forecast that shift to stay stable through the 2028, 29 school year and then return to historic averages. And the reason we say 28, 29 is that's when that 2022, 23 cohort of kindergarteners are going to age out of the K through six system in Norfolk and end up in middle school. We do not forecast the same decline that NESDEC does in the later years of the forecast. And we're going to talk about why that is, based on some of the population dynamics in Norfolk, some of the building, as well as some of the known limitations of the population forecasts that are, that are created by UMass and first for the whole state.
I just shut the door.
Okay. So if we look at it, I know this is just a big bunch of numbers. It's much better on the printed-out screen in front of you all, but I just want to walk you through the columns so you understand what we have when we're looking at it. We always like to compare birth years to school years. When we're, when we're looking at a grade progression ratio forecasting process, we always want to look at either five or six years prior births to a particular school year when we're looking at kindergarten. Obviously, that makes sense. Five-year-olds, you know, six-year-olds are going to be the ones who end up in kindergarten. So we have our birth year on here. So we're going to start with 2015 because we're just going to start 2020 here. There's a longer time series in some of the slides, but in the table, just to make sure we can have everything, we really only start with that 2020, 21 school year. We have the number of births that occurred in 2015 that should ostensibly become kindergarteners in 2020, 21. We have pre-K. We're not going to talk about that a lot today. Obviously, that's a capped thing that you all have right now. You know, I know there's talk about potentially increasing the number of pre-K because we do, on average, have 60 people on the waitlist each year. So what we've done here is just keep that stable. We're not really going to talk much about pre-K. For kindergarten through sixth grade, what we have is for 2020, 21 through 23, 24, that is actual data, that is actual enrollment data. Moving forward, that is all our forecast. When we come into the next column here, pre-K through six forecast, DAA, that's us, that is our forecast for the total of pre-K through six. Kindergarten through six is what it sounds like. It's, you know, it doesn't have pre-K in there. And then the year-over-year enrollment change is the year-over-year enrollment change in that K through six forecast. So as you can see, we have some years that are higher growth rates and some years that are lower growth rates. The main driver of this, you'll notice, is in the years when we have really high growth rates, say, look at 26, 27, the year prior had a small birth cohort and therefore a smaller kindergarten cohort. That is really generally the driver of the higher percentages. And we'll talk about why that's the case, specifically in Norfolk. The next column we have here is the comparison between our forecast, or is the actual K through six forecast for NESDEC, and then we have the difference between the two. So this is where you're going to see here, until basically 28, 29, we are actually lower, a little bit lower than the NESDEC forecast. And then we actually end up trending a bit higher. We then have our all-students forecast and the percent of students in public school. Okay. So that is, we're going to come back to this table at the end, but I just wanted you all to be thinking about the end as we talk about going through the actual process that we went through to create these projections. So we're going to start out with a comparison of actual enrollment versus NESDEC to really ensure that we understand why the situation is happening. So again, you've already seen this slide. The last two years, we have an overforecast under enrollment. So the first thing that we want to do is say, okay, what does that look like by grade? Take out pre-K at the bottom, that doesn't matter. If you look at grades two, three, four, five, and six, they're also pretty spot-on. What we notice is that in 22, 23, kindergarten is pretty far off. You know, the forecast was well above 150, coming, coming up to almost 175, and the actual enrollment was closer to 125. The next year, almost spot-on. And from what we know about enrollments going into next school year, the kindergarten is actually trending very closely to NESDEC again. What we see if we look at first grade is 23, 24, 22, 23 is fine, 23, 24 is where you see the cap. So it's that cohort of kindergarteners that are aging through that are going to be the issue. Next year, you're going to see second grade. The year after that, you're going to see third grade be off, then fourth, then fifth, then sixth. And there's a big reason why this is the case. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to spoil my message from later, but basically, folks in Norfolk, they make their decisions early about schooling and they stay. And that's why, you know, a few of these slides will be very important as we're talking. So if we look, I want to focus in just on kindergarten here, because it's a little easier to see with a more blown-up chart. So 2022, 23, overforecast. 23, 24 looks to be spot-on. We know 24, 25 is going to be pretty, pretty correct as well. This fork, this dip that NESDEC forecasted, potentially a little lower than I think it should be, but this is a reasonable dip and that is really due to birth year 2020 came in very low. Not only in Mass, not only in Norfolk, but in Massachusetts and actually across the country it came in very low. So there's a very low birth year, so we're going to expect that kindergarten cohort to be a bit smaller. First grade, already what I said, everything is shifting one year. So we've kind of diagnosed the problem. The problem is there was an overforecast of one kindergarten cohort and beyond that, things are actually looking, at least thus far, relatively reasonable going back to the NESDEC forecast. So let's look a little bit about a couple of different contextual factors. So looking at population forecasts, you all are lucky enough in the state of Massachusetts to have a very, very, very good program that does population projections at the town level for you all. The folks at the UMass Donahue Institute, Susan Strain, good friend, she and her team create population forecasts for all the towns in Massachusetts on a regular basis. The population of children in Norfolk is forecast to stay relatively stable over the forecast period. So if you look at that, under five, as well as the five to 19 population, here we are today in the most recent year of actual data. And what we're seeing is a general, you know, staying, staying pretty the same throughout the entire period, long past the projection point for what we're looking at, which stops, you know, right around here. So one known limitation of these forecasts, I want to point you to the 30 to 44 age group. And this group is growing. It's not growing as fast as, say, the 45 to 64 or the 65 and above, but it is still growing in Norfolk. In fact, it's growing enough that it's taking over some of the decline of the 20 to 29 population. Now, even in talking to Susan about this, one of the things that she cautioned me about her, her team's population forecast right now, that they're trying to fix in the future, is for a lot of communities where folks move out of places like, say, Boston, once they have children, they feel like they do a good job capturing the migration of the adults, but they don't feel like they do a good job capturing the migration of the children. So what I will say is, what this forecast is saying for you all is likely an underestimate of the movement of children from urban suburban areas in Norfolk. So my expectation here is a relatively stable, that we're slowly growing pre-K through six population while it's being in Norfolk. We also want to look at births. So births kind of increased overall in Norfolk through the late, you know, through, through the 1980s, held steady through the 90s, and declined steadily from that point through 2013, basically. In a lot of places, you actually see some increases in the 2000s, coming into 2008, and then you see a huge decline. Norfolk kind of started that, I guess, with the first dot-com bust and then just kind of continued decreasing basically through the end of, the bottom of the housing recession. From 2013, however, we have seen an increase in births with that big single decrease in births in 2020, which was happening throughout the country and throughout Massachusetts. We forecast births to not necessarily increase in this way that they did in the, in the 2010s, but we do expect them to increase slowly and maybe kind of level out towards the end of the forecast period. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Some of the cohorts that are coming through in childbearing age are a little bit smaller than the ones before, and also fertility rates continue to decrease. So really, you know, the overall story here, births should continue to slowly increase and stabilize with basically birth rate. Another contextual factor is our entrance. So if we look at just from 2013, 14 through this school year, again, we really have been, I mean, especially since 14, 15, we've been seeing this slow increase in children. And really, the anomaly is 22, 23 here. Every other year, we've really seen at least small amounts of growth. So I want to start thinking about why that kindergarten class of 22, 23 may have been smaller than expected for public schools. And there's a few hypotheses here. We'll talk about market share of public versus non-public options enrollment. But another thing that we see, and again, this is not just Norfolk, I've seen in other places as well, is an increase in what we call red-shirting of kindergarteners. And this is basically, again, I talked about a little earlier, it's, you know, instead of enrolling your five-year-old in school, it's enrolling, you're waiting a year in, six-year-old in kindergarten. And what we see is that both in 2020, 21, as well as in 23, 24, we have a larger-than-normal number of six-plus-year-olds enrolling in school, in kindergarten. And on this next slide, as we're looking by year, we're actually looking at monthly age. So we're bucketing kids by, by month of age instead of year of age. And one of the things that we see is, you know, 2020, 21 was interesting because it's kind of, you have a big kind of flat top here. It might have just been something to do with the age distribution. It might have been something to do with that first year post-COVID. But what we see in 23, 24 is a true bifurcated distribution. We have five-year-olds and we have nearly six and nearly six-year-olds. So there, there's definitely something going on there and we, we see it a little in 22, 23 as well. So that's one potential impact here. One, you know, the way that we really want to look at doing our forecast, though, is by looking at grade progression ratios. They're really, again, staple of K-12 enrollment forecasts. They allow us to understand historical patterns in who stays in or who leaves a school district as they progress through the grades. Again, here, you know, if we're looking at first grade, you know, a number right at one would mean the exact same number of first graders are in Norfolk Public Schools in a current year as there were kindergarteners the year before. So one of the key findings, I will say, and I really, you know, we laughed about this the first time I presented. I don't know that I have ever seen a school district that has grade progression ratios as close to one for grades one through six as Norfolk does. I mean, really, these things are, they basically are. This means that once, you know, a student and their parents have decided. This means that once, you know, a student and their parents have decided to go to Norfolk public schools, you often finish out of Norfolk public schools. It also means that not many people are moving into the district after kindergarten. So first grade, we do actually have like a little bit of ups and downs. In 2016, 2017, this number is almost 1.1. You know, so if there were 50 students in kindergarten, there were 55 in first grade the next year. But if we look at second grade, I mean, there's one year that bumps up noticeably above. Third grade, nothing. Fourth grade, nothing. Fifth grade, nothing. Sixth grade, I mean, this is, this is crazy. Usually, things bump, kind of bump around, especially in a school district that, that isn't extremely large, right? So this, this is a very, very, very stable school district once students make, make these decisions. And to support this, I know, Dr. Lardy, you all have also kind of done a, a survey of students, and I believe of all the students who responded, two said they're moving next year out of the school district. So, you know, but again, once people make their decisions, they're kind of here this So that's grade progression ratios. Another thing we want to look at is market share. So this is another issue that may have caused that, that overprojection under 23, 23. In fact, I think it is like the, one of the major causes. So we do find some general increases over the last couple of years for non-public options. This has happened in a lot of places, though, also in a lot of places, it is starting to decrease coming out of COVID. However, until 22, 23, they mostly matched the growth of options. So, you know, cohorts of private charter and homeschool students were growing, but so, so was, so were public school cohorts. In 22, 23, growth was mostly due to this kindergarten class. Here, I mean, if you, if you look at grade five up here, it's larger than it was the year before, but so was grade year, grade four, right? So this cohort moves here. For kindergarten, it's not like this was just a huge birth cohort or anything. This is just a group of parents who decided to enroll their kids either in private or charter schools or homeschool. However, we do know that kindergarten in 2023, 24, in public schools, we do not have data for private charter and homeschool students yet for 23, 24. But we do know for public schools, kindergarten enrollment increased back to expected levels. So we actually expect a kindergarten for non-public options to be back in line with some of these expectations as well. And we'll know that in, in June with the data. So if you look at the market share based on, on those years, historically, you know, before COVID, Norfolk public schools was north of 95%. Going into the first full COVID year, it was 93%, 93 and a half percent of students were in public school, who were, who lived in Norfolk School District. And then in 22, 23, that number went down to 2. Now, again, enrollment has increased again in public schools, so I expect this number is going to go back up over time. We also need to look at housing. So I know this is a really funny-looking chart, you know, maybe it looks like a very sporadic heartbeat or something like that, or a really, really terrible day for some stocks, but this is the seasonal trend of home sales for this, for, for Norfolk. And this is monthly data. And really what we're wanting to look at here with these sales is, another thing that could have impacted that 22, 23 year is the increase in interest rates and therefore a decrease in potential folks buying homes that could then lead to fewer people who are moving in with, with kindergarten-aged children. And, you know, there's, obviously, sales have gone down. That being said, when we look at the forecasts, the, the overall Nezdeck forecast kind of starts lining up with the overall all-student forecast and all-student enrollment that we have historically. And really, I, I think this is something to keep an eye on if it continues to be an issue, but I don't think it's actually having a large impact right now. We can look at the same data on a yearly basis, and again, it's very clear. I mean, 2020, we all know the housing market was absolutely bonkers everywhere. I actually was, you know, sold my house in 2020 in DC and moved to California. It was absolutely crazy. I then came back to Virginia in 22, and it was much harder to buy a house, even though more, less homes were being sold. So, you know, I know it's the same, same situation up there. So again, I think this is going to be something to continue to keep an eye on, but not something, I think, that is yet impacting your, your forecast. The other thing that we want to look at is the actual units that are being built throughout time in, in Norfolk. So 2010 was actually the highest number of units built, the 2010s decade, the highest number of, of units built in Norfolk since the 1980s. 2020, during the 2020s, obviously, we're still very early in the decade, but that number has slowed sometimes. One of the things that we did, I know that Nezdeck and others do this as well, kind of look at potential aggregate student yield based on new development. And the way that they do that is they kind of, you know, they look at change over time, and they look at the number of, of units, units coming in, and try to estimate student yield. One of the things that we really like to do is we like to, even when we're not having to redraw boundaries, in a case like this, where obviously, you know, the district is the boundaries, we still like to get address-level student data. And the reason we like to do that is we can get a much better estimate of what the yield of new builds recently has been. So that is something that we actually did. So this is just a picture of kind of all of the residential buildings throughout Norfolk by the decade that they were built. We also have it by family, so we're able to, to look at and make sure that, you know, new condo buildings aren't going to have a different impact than, say, new single-family homes. In the case of Norfolk, that's not really a huge issue, being that most of, most new properties are going to be the single-family variety. Now, one thing I'm not going to show here, because it's privacy-protected, is the actual dots of students put into these, into these parcels. But if you can imagine with me, you know, we would actually have, you know, students in the, with little dots in each of these parcels, and we would know when they move, right? So one of the things that we see is, for a home that was built in, let's say, 2010, so you can just go straight up this line here, in the 2015, in the 2010s decade, in the 2015, 16 school year, each housing unit in Norfolk that was built in that decade yielded about 0.25 students, whereas homes built in the 2000s yielded above 0.4 students. So that's how you can, you can kind of read this. And the, the thing that we see here is that new builds, and again, there's less of them right now, but new builds are generally, like, going into this year, yielding more students over, over time, you know, as we go into the 2020s. But in general, a lot of the new builds in Norfolk are generally bringing in a decent number of students, I'd say. It's always south of, of half a student per unit, but still, you know, we're getting somewhere between 0.35 and, and 0.4 students per, per the housing unit. And you can kind of see this over time as well. This is years after build completion, us kind of looking at what the student yield per unit was. And if you look at the totals, you know, set up these by grades, you can kind of see it again, somewhere between 0.45 and, at the low, at the low end, 0.25 or 0.3. So the important output of all of this is, is that. What we really want, our expectation, is there's somewhere between 0.45 to 0.3 students per unit. We also know from the planning department that there are 148 units currently approved and under construction in this, in, in the town of Norfolk. 108 of these are not age-restricted. For those age-restricted ones, we assume there, there is no impact on the schools. So there, there's, there are no students coming from Oak Cliff. From Lakeland Hills and Wake's Crossing, our expectation is that this is going to add 32 to 49 public school students in the next probably three to five years over this forecast. And kind of as we'll talk about, most of that's going to come from the kindergarten classes. So our final forecast, and I seem to have somehow lost one of my most important slides, so I'm going to go back and make sure it's not in here, and I think I may have just deleted it, so I may have to wait just a moment. I sure did. So you all are going to have to bear with me for just a minute, because I don't want to miss the most important slide here.
You really know how to create a cliffhanger there.
I know, I, you know, I'm, I'm a performer at heart, so. Let's see, this is, I'm going to do this as fast as I possibly can. Do, do, do. This is, you know, I worked for a little bit in, in tech, and we always like to say, you never, ever, ever want to do a live demo. Like, it's just the worst thing that you can do, because doing it live, it just can always go very sideways. And, you know, it's a very, very good, very good point. And this is really telling me, because there it is, there's what I'm hopefully looking Sometimes when you delete things, you delete too many of them, and it just works out very poorly.
Chris, while you're looking for that, can I just clarify and summarize the conversation based on the building committee that sort of encapsulates the trends that you're expecting?
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm getting the slide right now, so it's a perfect time to go ahead.
But the overall sense that your study has uncovered in terms of projections is that when students enroll in the Norfolk public schools, they stay. You are not, you are expecting that the students that left during COVID will remain out. They are not coming back. So you expect that the students that left are staying out through sixth grade, and we won't see a return there. So the projections are based on new students entering the district. And correct me if I'm wrong, but our data has been very consistent over the past eight to 10 years, that if we have 100 kindergarten students, the next year we have 100 first graders, on average, with the close to a 1, 1 ratio, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yep.
And the primary driver for the enrollment growth is that we are seeing increasingly large entering K classes. And so as those grades roll up, the overall growth in town, the numbers are driven by larger K classes coming up and enrolling up, and those higher numbers staying pretty steady at the kindergarten level. Is that correct?
So this is, that is exactly what I was going for. This is the most important slide in the presentation, and I got a little happy with the delete button, I guess, earlier. One of the most important parts of the grade progression ratio process is understanding the birth-to-kindergarten ratios. Now, birth-to-kindergarten ratio of one means, you know, you have the same number of kindergarteners in, let's say, you know, 23, 24, as you did births five years ago. Now, what we have in Norfolk, when you're, when you're comparing this to the other grade progression ratio slides, is a situation where every single year after 2012, 2013, that number has been well above 0.5. In fact, most years, it's, it's been getting closer to 1.5, especially recently, and in some years, it's been as high as 1.7. These two years where it's up towards 1.7, 1.75 are both coming out of low birth years. So what that also tells me is, it's not really about the births that are happening in Norfolk. Now, I'm not saying there aren't people that have their kids when they live in Norfolk and, and continue to go to school. That absolutely is happening. But it's the in-migration that is really determining, determining the size of a lot of these cohorts. So when you have these levels of grade progression ratios, and they've stayed kind of this high over time, you're going to continue to, to expect that to happen. This is where we also see 2022, 23 looks pretty out of, it looks like a pretty big anomaly compared to what's been happening for, you know, at least the past 10 years, right? We have one other year that's even close until we go back to 2011, 12, and 2012, 13. So our expectation is that this number, even if it came down a little bit, is going to be staying closer to that 1.5 area. So that, again, that was one of the most important points to be made, and thank you, Dr. Lardy, for kind of jumping in there for me as I was trying to find the slide. So if we go back to it, you know, I just want to close with the forecast again. Really, again, just to hit the highlights here, when students, when students and their parents make a decision, they tend to stay with it. We did see this shift in non-public enrollment based on one cohort in 2022, 23. It does not seem to be happening again in 23, 24. That cohort is just aging through. So because people make a decision and stick with it, we think that this delta between our forecast and Nezdeck is going to continue through 28, 29. However, we then don't really see a reason for this number to come down. In fact, we, we expect the, the number to keep going up, given the migration patterns into Norfolk. So I'm going to end with just here, you know, you have, you all have the table in front of you, I like to usually put this up during question time, but I can kind of come back to it, I also like to be able to see the room when, when we do questions. But at the end of the day, you know, that's, that's really what we're looking at. I do think that there, there is support for continued growth in Norfolk. I don't believe there is a ton of support for the idea that, you know, non-public options are going to continue increasing. I think they should stay about the same proportionally to public schooling. I really do think it was just that one cohort that, that had the, had the impact, because it didn't, it didn't happen this year. And I guess with that, I'll just turn it back over to questions.
Thank you very much, Chris. I think we'll defer to our guests for, if you have any questions to start us off with, and the board will follow us in thereafter.
So myself and Grace, who are the school committee appointees to the building committee, have had a chance to chat with Chris on a few occasions, so I'm going to defer to those members who have not had an opportunity to look at this, if they have any questions.
I could quickly just jump in, so before we get to questions, because the chart's a little hard to read, and I know people are just looking at it, but basically, the projections that you are expecting over the next 10 years, just for the K-6, assuming no growth in preschool, which we know will grow, but without counting preschool, you're looking at a net of another 234 students in the next 10.
Yes, that's right. I will just keep the slideshow up, so maybe, maybe that's a little easier to see on the screen there.
Yeah, it might be. The numbers are a little.
I have a question. Just kind of wanted to see, kind of notorious for asking questions. Chris, is there, and forgive me if I didn't catch it, but can you, is there a reason why Nezdeck is trending, trended down a little bit and yours is trending up? I'm just curious what your thoughts were with that. Oh, is it because they didn't look at as in-depth as you did?
So to be completely honest, in looking at the report, I cannot find a reason why that number should go down.
Okay.
Births are continuing to go up, their migration doesn't change. There are a couple smaller cohorts, but I don't think they have that big of a, big of a difference. I do think it's probably a smaller cohort piece for a couple of the births. The births have been trending a little higher, actually, than they expected, but it shouldn't have a huge impact. My biggest guess is, a lot of times when you're doing a forecast like this, over time, you want to, to regress a little bit and, and slow down even small amounts of growth. I just don't, I don't particularly see any historical reason why that would be the case, and I don't see it in the population forecasts that are coming out of UMDI either.
Forgive me if I don't have background in analytics, but is there a standard error of measurement, like, when you look at, you know, like, your projections, so you say, okay, like, have you looked back at previous, I'm sure you have, previous reports and said, ooh, we were off by, we expect to, you know, up plus or minus three? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, for a lot of this, the methodology that we're using doesn't necessarily lend itself to a true, like, standard error measurement. But with that being said, some of the, you know, we, we do forecasts for, for a large, you know, large group of different K-12 institutions. And, you know, for instance, one of our clients in North Carolina last year, we were, we were off by 0.2% over a year. Now, that delta is always going to increase over Now, that delta is always going to increase over time. You know, doing a one-year forecast is, uh, you know, you're, you're much more sure about what's going to happen in the next year than five years, than 10 years, right? So whenever you put that cone on there, that cone of uncertainty, it always increases over time. But, you know, that expectation of, you know, anywhere between, you know, 1 to, to 2% variance over a year is, is a good, that's a very good forecast.
And that makes complete sense, and I can tell you just subjectively, um, I, I agree as a parent in town that we see a lot of kids that stay in through sixth grade. And then I have a middle school right now going into high school, and I do see the trajectory of like, oh, we're going to go to, you know, different, whether it's tri-county or different, but I would say that consistently for my two children, their, their peers have stayed the same through K through six versus middle school and high school. So I would say, you know, we're unique in that we look, we're looking at pre-K through six or K through six primarily, versus a system that's looking K through 12, where there's so much variability. So I'm feeling confident, um, with the numbers, especially what you just said about, um, you know, having a slight, slight percent off your projections. So I'm good. Thank you.
One thing that the building committee had requested, and Chris, I think you referred to this earlier, but as we're trying to understand the changing patterns and the change in market share from 2022 to more families choosing to leave the district, the, um, building committee requested that we survey all current families and have people indicate whether they'll be returning to Norfolk or whether they're going to be leaving. And also, we had them register for transportation because we're trying to bring down our transportation costs and use fewer buses. So we did send out that survey. We had a huge response. I think, uh, as of the building committee, about 890 of the students responded, because people want either to register for transportation or not. Um, and we did see, we only have potentially two students not returning of all the responses. One is moving and relocating, um, and the other is going to a, a legacy school, uh, that family had attended. But there, I think the data that we gathered through that is pretty consistent with what the DAA has found.
Did we see, I know, uh, the year after COVID, when we returned, we lost a lot of families to private school or homeschool.
That number increased, yeah.
Increased, and we think those kids will stay out, is what.
We do, and we did that survey too. So I would say, um, the one thing that's a little more challenging, when we send out surveys to families that are enrolled in charter schools, private school, or homeschooling, we don't get the same return rate. But the vast majority of those that replied did indicate they intend to remain in their current placement through sixth grade.
And do we think that that has an impact on the younger siblings? If they had an older sibling who tended to use that, would that affect later years? Or is it such a small number? It's not going to be a knee-high mover?
Uh, it didn't, it didn't appear that way from the conversations that we had, but again, we have a low response rate. I would say, um, homeschool, uh, sometimes people choose that option for religious reasons, although, families in the survey did reply that they would consider, uh, they might consider returning to school. Uh, and the numbers, like you said, we, we also are looking at the new kindergarten enrollment. So the year that we had the drop, we were projecting, I think, as Chris said, like 165 kindergartens, and we had like 100 and, I don't remember, 128 enroll. We did see a significant increase in the number of six-year-olds the next year, which I think is logical. If during COVID, your child didn't have a true preschool experience, many parents opted for them to have that the following year and to come in older. So that's not surprising data. And we did see, uh, an increase in, in people choosing other things. Last, or this current school year, those numbers are back right, right aligned with NESDAQ projections. And we, um, we have moved, several years ago, we moved new registration for kindergarten up to January. So for budget reasons, we'd have a better true estimate. And we already have, I think the last I checked, it was 148 students registered. And then we looked at the data history, and between now and the start of kindergarten, we typically pick up eight to 10. So based on all the data that we have currently, we're projecting that number to be high again. So we don't see evidence that those, that that, um, that more families are going to choose private. The majority of families that have K-eligible students are indicating they're intending to come, based on the data that we have.
Ingrid, I think one thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm not remembering, but one of the factors that these homeschool families often stated was that it was their school's response to COVID. So as we move further out from that, that could sway, you know.
We did, yes, thank you. We did ask on the survey, and again, we have a small response because many families have chosen not to reply, even though we've sent multiple. But we did ask people what made, why they made the decision. Many of, uh, the parents that responded, whose students had prior, um, or had older children who had come to the schools, were, uh, choosing that option because other, uh, private charters were back full-time, where we were in a hybrid model, and they were looking for full, for their kids to be back in a full-time placement, sometimes for work-related reasons, for childcare reasons. So yes, the response to the pandemic was, is definitely a part of. There were a handful that were indicated they were concerned about growing class sizes. There were some that talked about space, but I would say the majority were COVID-related decisions that were made. And again, I think it's logical, once kids move and start in another school and get connected to peer groups, they, they do tend to stay.
And we've had a couple of families, even last year, that sent a sibling back to school and had other siblings home. So there's always a variability of.
Any other questions from the committee? All right, to the board. Anita, go right ahead.
I don't have any questions that really jump out at me. I was really impressed with that flat line at the one. Like, that's not something in, in any school that I've been in that you would expect or that you see. And that's a real compliment to the Norfolk Public Schools, so, um, that's remarkable data. And it seems like a super thorough report and kind of scary numbers.
I would say we had a lot of, um, I appreciate, Chris did a great job, and we did have a lot of extra data requests. So a thanks goes out to our tech team because to try to understand the kindergarten, they needed birth dates for all the students that came through for the last 10 years. So our tech team has been scrambling to kind of pull data and get it to them. Also, as Chris talked about, we put in place a data privacy agreement because they really wanted to look at actual, rather than just a formula, like each house yields, you know, by bedrooms, uh, the number of students. They want to look at actual houses that sold and how many students were residing in individuals. So we had to give the address level data as well. So I just want to credit our technology team, who worked really hard to try to pull that data so that they would have what they needed to do their analysis.
Thank you.
Yep.
Definitely. I definitely second that.
Uh, just a couple moments. Is it Chris?
Yes.
I'm familiar with your firm, Chris, and I want to compliment you. You have, your firm has an excellent reputation. And to your question, I understand the deviation from at least what I have learned, it's, uh, very minor. So, uh, I have faith in your numbers. Uh, you, you folks do a very good job in terms of your analytics. So, uh, thank you for that. I really don't have any questions. I've had a chance to look at this. It doesn't surprise me that students that come here stay. I mean, I, I think you could take that line back to the 70s, and I think it would be as consistent as it is today because our schools have been so outstanding. And everyone has done such a great job at maintaining that standard. So, um, to all of you who continue to maintain that, well, done. Having had nine kids and nine grandkids and four kids go through it, uh, I thank you for that. Uh, I think the question is, where do we go from here? And I know that's not a conversation for tonight. I know that's a conversation for your committee, but, uh, thank you for this presentation. I do appreciate it. I, I could study this for next two days. It's not going to change anything. They are what they are. Um, so it's, it's where do we go is the question now.
Well, I'm not going to let you off that easy, Chris. I got a couple of questions for you.
Fair enough.
Actually, my first question isn't even for you. Dr. Lardy, in the beginning of the presentation, they highlighted that we had a capacity of 62 students for our pre-K program. And then it was noted that there is a consistent waitlist for another 60 students. Is that correct?
So it's more than that. So the, the preschool program is designed to serve students as of their third birthday who have a disability. In order to keep them, um, not considered substantially separate programs, we have to, in inclusion programs, we have to have a ratio of 50/50, at least 50% typical peers. At this point, we have, uh, a number of, I think it's, I'd have to look again, but like between 65 and 68 students registered for preschool, we have 70-plus on the waitlist. What we are finding with, uh, and that's why I said the, we're assuming no growth in preschool, but the reality is, we are seeing our special education population grow parallel to the overall growth. So if we have more students with disabilities entering the school, we will have to bring in more peer models, and that number will have to grow. We are capped right now from first, by space, by staffing, um, and by capacity. But we will, will have to come up with alternate solutions and bring more students in because by law, we have to bring students in that require that program as of their third birthday that have a disability, and we also are required to bring in, um, peers, or it would be considered a substantially separate, which is not a least restrictive environment for students with disabilities, so.
Thank you very much.
But we wanted to be really conservative, um, so we've held it at that. But yes, we have over 70 families on the waitlist.
Thank you. Chris, when we were talking about the in-migration as it pertained to kindergarten students, as someone who contributed to the 2018 number, bringing, uh, a child that was born in Milwaukee over into town, I understand that that is not too atypical of people. A lot of people have their first child out of town, realize, oh my gosh, I need a lot more space than I have. I'm moving out to the country, which I know is a debatable thing in these days. But that being said, you didn't see that trend changing very much, even though home prices are going up through the roof in Norfolk, and we're seeing the housing market do all kinds of crazy things. You don't anticipate that that's going to have any impact on kids being born in district for the first time and going into kindergarten?
So I'm not saying that it's not going to in the future. What I'm saying is I don't think that we have a long enough, uh, time series to say that it is going to have a large impact. Now, I live in a very similar, uh, town, just outside of DC instead of outside Boston. And same thing, I had my first kid in DC, did a couple of years out in LA, and then came back. I didn't go back to DC. I went to Vienna, Virginia, uh, which is, you know, just outside of LA and, uh, very similar, very good school. And we're seeing the same thing here. We have house prices that are growing, going through the roof. We're actually starting to have homes sit on the market. Kindergarten enrollment is not going down. And the reason for that is often people move several years before that first kindergartner goes in, right? So again, anecdotal here, um, I'll, I'll use myself. We moved back from Los Angeles. My oldest was two and a half. My youngest had just been born. You know, our kids aren't actually going to be in the school system for a couple more years. Now, if there is going to be an impact, it's going to be a few years out. However, usually, demand and supply are going to have to find a way to, to make this happen. Um, and, and I mean, that's, that's what we've seen, even, even during the run-up to, in 2007, 2008. That still didn't change migration rates that much. And then even in the crash, it did change migration rates, um, but it still didn't have long-term, as long-term of impacts on, on the enrollment. Had a bigger impact on births, um, but it didn't have as much on enrollment. So I think it is one thing that you will want to continue to watch. But right now, I don't think that it has been occurring long enough for it to have an impact, uh, going into the future.
Fantastic. Thank you. Uh, one last question, and I'm going to switch over to my, my planning roots here. Uh, when we talked about development and growth here in town and what the impact would be to our schools, more often than not, we always address, well, what is it going to mean in terms of school population? We don't necessarily have large neighborhoods being built up with standard development that are one-acre, single-family lots. We have more condensed, uh, multifamily housing being done now. Is part of your report, I didn't necessarily see a breakout that identified that percentage of kids. I think you said it was 0.35 to 0.4 students per residential home. Does that break out the type of home, or is that just taking an average of all homes?
It is, at this point, it's taking an average of all homes. It is something that, that we can look at, the differences. I don't think it, it, it's not in a place like Norfolk going to have that big of a difference, just given your spread of single.
Can I jump in there, Chris, because I think Kevin's question, you only consider, you didn't consider the new proposed multi-unit housing in your study. You only considered the Lakeland and the ones that are under construction, those developments.
Correct.
So those aren't even in here. We're assuming, and you are, that those larger developments will have a lower impact. But because they're not approved, we don't know the size, we don't know the scope, they're not even considered in this.
Got it.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. I misunderstood the question there a little bit.
Yeah, I just.
Anything that is not approved yet is not included in this.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, one last question on top of that. Uh, you had mentioned that there is an overlay that you had prepared as part of your internal review that included the dots around the map. Is that something that we're able to have access to, or is that all, we're also only restricted from the privacy?
Everyone is because it's a student, it's student-level data, so, for privacy. But again, the point of that, and we have a signed contract data privacy sharing agreement. The point of that was that they wanted to use actual turnover. So if this house sold, what did that generate? New students, rather than just an estimate. So, um, it is restricted per the privacy agreement and per our student confidentiality. So that's why that address level data can't be publicly shared.
Got you. Thank you. So I'll turn that over to you now, Justin, as we start to assess.
Can I have a follow-up on yours, if I may, before you go to Justin? Because it relates to one of the questions you asked, and I meant to ask this. In your data, I, I don't, I don't have the ability, nor I, would I think I'd be correct, to challenge your data in terms of its trending now. My question really follows up on Kevin's. And where you show that deviation between the prior study and your study in terms of the longer horizon. That was a question to me as well. Norfolk had exceptional growth over the last 10 years. We're not forecasted to have that level of growth the next 10 years for a number of reasons. Not necessarily just the availability of land, interest rates, all kinds of considerations. I don't think we've had a multi-lot housing project brought forward to us since 2020. Am I right, Mr. Bullock? I don't think. But very little, very little. And there is a, if you, a master plan is, is not in the final document yet, but I think you'll find that we're not forecasted to have that level of growth yet. Did you reflect that in that number? Because that logic would tell me that that number would decrease, not increase, over time. Why am I not connecting those dots?
I think because you assumed no, no additional development, right? You didn't consider any additional. You only looked at what's currently on the market and being built.
Correct.
Then how, how do you see that forecast continuing to grow if you didn't take any additional growth?
Because, because what we're looking at are, are the historical trends, and yes, over the past 10 years.
Those trends are based on growth.
Yep, yeah. So you have seen more growth, but the thing is, we actually do damp those trends. Kind of move, you know, moving into the future. And that's, that is why it's not continuing to exponentially grow as it did over the decade. So it, it really is just, you know, looking, looking at that progression of the historical rates and ensuring that we're not adding on any additional building. What we're really adding is the people, people moving in and out. And, and folks coming in, uh, you know, from, from the city and folks potentially moving out for different reasons, in different parts of the workforce.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Justin, I was just going to make a note to say that as we go through the steps of highlighting the impacts of growth to the school community, it would be helpful for Rich or somebody from planning to be able to highlight what the impact, not getting into specifics of individual addresses, but to highlight some of the products that we've had come across and what the contribution of estimated number of school age children have been so that we could speak more accurately about what that impact looks like locally, as opposed to using a study from, you know, LA in 2019.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I've monopolized enough of the conversation at this point. Was there anything else, Chris, that you had for the group?
No.
Anything else from the committee? Any other thing else from the board?
No.
Justin?
I actually did have a question. I, I did miss our committee, committee meeting. And so I'm just looking, uh, on page 24, uh, Chris. So the summary I get here is, um, the, the Norfolk Public School forecast stays below the NESDAQ forecast through 2028, 29, and then ends up higher. And then on the following sheet, I just want to understand how I'm going to read the, on page 25, the chart here. When I look at it, I'm a little confused. For example, if I look at 2024, uh, the second row, it has 1159, and then NESDAQ has 1125. So I think you're higher than NESDAQ. Am I, am I reading that wrong? Can you just explain to me how I read that chart?
Are you looking at birth year or school year?
When you say 2024, birth year or schooling?
I'm looking at 2024, uh, school year.
So in this, so you are correct that the DAA forecast exceeds NESDAQ in the second half of the study.
So that, that chart here, or 25, is different than what I'm looking for in 24? That's what I kind of just want to verify.
I'm not sure.
Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to re-pull my slides here.
So what, what they're saying is that if you look at the school year 23, 24, their forecast data from DAA is not. data from DAA is 979, NEDSTEC's forecast was 1,053. So they're under the NEDSTEC forecast for that year, and for the next four years. Starting in school year 28, '29, you'll see it changes. So in school year 28, '29, I'm sorry, it's the next one, 29, '30, it starts to exceed. So in 29, '30, the NEDSTEC forecast was for 1,141, and DAA is 1,153.
Maybe I'll take it offline, because, for example, I don't want to monopolize, I know we have other stuff to do, but like you say, if I look at K through 6 forecast, DAA, that second row right there, now let me just run down to 25, because on the other chart, it says it trends lower. It says 1159 there, and then on the.
That's the birth year.
You're looking at the birth year, that's the difference.
Okay.
Yep, that's birth year.
That's really confusing, because I did that, too.
That's the part I want to make sure is clear, because that's giving different data than what's on the previous sheet, so if anyone reads that, you might get confused because you're seeing a higher number versus that. That's the part I want to clarify.
So when you're looking at the birth year, so if you're looking at the 2020 birth year, those kids don't come to kindergarten until 2025.
Okay.
So there's a five-year difference from birth year to when they enroll.
There you go. That was my one question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Don't feel alone, I missed that as well.
I did the first time I looked at it, too. It was confusing.
Thank you. I know, it's a very confusing part. There's really not a great way to visualize it either.
Good. Thank you. In that case, Chris, thank you so much. We truly appreciate the time, the effort, and the report. If we do think of any other questions, obviously, we'll be able to filter them back through the committee to you, so thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Have a good night, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So I imagine the school committee will want to, oh, no, we have a vote to take, don't we?
We do.
The next one, yes, sorry, not on DAA.
All right, so Justin, do we have any background on the vote that we're about to take, or maybe I would kick that over to Dr. Allardy?
I'll do a quick one, and then Dr. Allardy can take it. In the board's packet, and I believe the school committee's packet as well, you have a memo. It just outlines the process that the town did to authorize this special education reserve fund. There's $250,000 in it. Part of the process in order to expend funds from that, based on the state, is that both the school committee and the select board have to take a vote, a majority vote, to expend funds. I'll let Dr. Allardy take it any further than that, in terms of budget process and how we got there.
So as you know, the budget process is really difficult this year. The Norfolk Public Schools, school committee voted to approve a budget after the public hearing in March. That budget reflects significant reductions, several staffing eliminations. Part of that increase in costs is driven by increasing special education costs. In order to balance the budget and not bring forward a request to the town that would be, you know, 5% or 6%, they really worked on making appropriate reductions and recommended using a portion of the stabilization funds to offset the increases we're seeing in special education in order to balance the budget. As we've talked about in the past, we know when you're struggling with this and balancing the town budget and the use of free cash, it's never a great idea to balance your budget with one-time non-recurring revenue. That said, there really isn't an alternate. With the shortfall on the town side in trying to balance the budget, this 125 additional thousand in cuts to the school would be untenable, when we've already eliminated six positions. So this was the best solution, I think, I don't know if Lisa or Midora want to jump in, but this was the best solution that we could come up with, that would allow us to bring forward a reasonable request, knowing that it is going to put us in a tough position next year, because we're using two sources, actually, for our overall budget of non-recurring revenue within the special education lines.
I feel the same way. It feels like we're kind of kicking the can down the road, and it's not, it doesn't feel right to do it, but it is literally the only option I think we have at this point, because any, the cuts we've already made, I feel like will have an impact on the students. They were difficult cuts, they weren't just easy things that we can do without, it's okay, they weren't okay. So I don't like it, but I do think this is the only option and the right thing to do at this time.
Sure, echoing that, I mean, the cuts are certainly not easy, and bringing the budget request down to a number so close to 3%, it creates a false reality when we're doing that with one-time funds. Now, we actively advocated to establish the special education fund in 2020, and as I recall, at that town meeting, even had some pushback on the floor, folks did not want to have the money set aside. And, you know, we were able to successfully do that, we did it for this very purpose. That was four years ago, and it was supposed to be, you know, the far-off, ready-to-fund. And, you know, here we are.
Crowing.
It's crowing. It was a bad year last year. We will have $125,000 left in the fund moving into the next fiscal cycle. It's not sustainable to think that, you know, we're moving into a budget cycle by accessing this, where buses are running, kids are going to school, everything must be fine. That is not the case. It is not the case with respect to the operational budget for the local elementary schools. There is no more room for creativity, there is no more room to the reductions, the reductions we're already making are going to significantly, in my opinion, as someone who's been on this committee for now six years, significantly impede our students' ability to access learning the way that they have been able to historically in this town. So I support using it in this circumstance, it's what it was created for, but it is a indicator of a much larger problem, I think, relative to how these schools are operationally being funded.
And two things that I would just share in relation to that, too, because I'm not sure everybody knows the history, but in the past, prior to the establishment and stabilization account, the Norfolk Public Schools, as well as the King Philip Schools, budgeted a placeholder for a child if a child of special education that was outplaced moved into the district, so that we wouldn't have to go back to the town for an additional appropriation to fund the needs of one child. In order to create a placeholder, that drives our overall ask up, and then we had an agreement with the town, obviously, that if we had savings at the end of the year, we returned the money to the town, and that went into free cash. However, the initial ask was higher. We agreed with the town, if we established this stabilization fund, we would no longer carry a placeholder. So we do not have any contingency funding built into the budget for any unexpected, which is why when we talked about this, we felt that we needed to keep some funds in that, because we don't have a contingency. That was part of the original agreement, to try to lower our overall annual ask, and, you know, bring that down a little bit, but it does leave us with this as the only contingency remaining.
Yep.
And I would support using the 125,000, that would be my recommendation, it was the budget subcommittee's recommendation, but we just want to be clear that it is pushing a problem off. One thing that I just wanted to share, that I think you've probably been following really closely, is changes in Chapter 70. So we, both Norfolk and Rentham and a few other towns are in an unusual situation, where Chapter 78 is based on your enrollment count from the prior year, October 1 count. When you are seeing growing in enrollment every year, we're hearing from the state about a $30 increase per child. When you look at what we're receiving in Chapter 78 divided by the new number of students we have enrolled, we're actually seeing a decrease in what we're receiving per pupil. So Chapter 78, when people are hearing, oh, there's more Chapter 78, we're actually seeing in Norfolk, less money per pupil from Chapter 78 annually for the past several years, because of the enrollment growth. That's not accounted for when the Chapter 70 allocations are computed. So I just think that that's something that is another area that we really need to continue that advocacy, because Chapter 70 is one of the primary ways, especially small communities, to fund education, and it isn't keeping up with the growth in our district and in the costs.
We're having the same issue with King Philip.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, and I do think, I think it's worth noting, I know there's some discussion at the state level to increase Chapter 70 funding, that could come through at the last minute to increase the level of funding available locally for the elementary schools. I think if we're pointing out, for anyone who's following, unlike King Philip, who receives those funds directly, that money goes to the town. So we sit here as willing partners and collaborators, hoping that should access Chapter 70 funding come into the town, there is a good faith effort to work together in partnership to restore some of what has been cut from this budget as we move forward into the fall town meeting cycle. We cannot count on that happening in the current budget cycle, so certainly we support utilizing the special education stabilization funding at this point, to make sure that we're moving ahead with a balanced budget. But, you know, I mean, I think it just bears mentioning that we would expect some level of dialogue around those funds being utilized for educational purposes in the go-forwards.
But what it's worth, I agree with you.
And as was committed when we went through the final discussions about the budget levels, so.
Those funds are intended for the schools. And you're right, everything comes to King Philip directly, because we're in essence of town by ourselves, where in this case, it comes to here. And there are a lot of differences between KP and the Norfolk systems in terms of how the budgets are built, what the costs are, and all of that, but it's irrelevant at this point. State does not fund to the adequate level that they should. It's impossible for the communities to meet the standards of all of the schools' needs. It's impossible. With two and a half, and without overrides, year after year after year, there's no way you can do it. The state consistently underfunds every aspect of our needs. The only way to fix this is hopefully somehow get the state to understand that they impose these obligations, and they have to fund those obligations. And good luck, we've tried for years, I will keep trying.
I think there's a lot of advocacy happening.
The issue's across the board. I mean, it's also true in the town. You know, I mean, pick your poison. You talk about the police and the Quinn bill, and whatever it might be, it's across the board, and it's very hard for the communities to meet the needs of all of the stakeholders. It's tough.
And I think.
We do, you guys do.
Just like you said, there's rising costs, like transportation costs for schools. Our transportation, we just bid our contract is going to be up over 18% over the next three years. It's a major contract, it's a huge expense. Special education out of district placements are increasing by 12%, 14%.
17%.
17% in some places. So when you have all these costs rising at such a dramatic rate, and we're looking at 2% and 3%, it's not keeping up with costs, and you're looking at annual cuts and reductions. So, you know, again, I think my recommendation is to support the request to utilize these funds, it was what they were intended for, it's leaving us short and tight next year, and limiting our capacity to respond to unexpected changes.
Which I think it bears mentioning, that when we're talking about unexpected changes, what will be left in this fund would not be sufficient to cover two unanticipated outplacements.
No, it's one, we cover one.
Yeah.
And again, out of respect for students and families, nobody wants to go back to a town meeting for appropriation, that's just, you know, not a great thing, when you have, it's driven by individual family or child's needs.
Right.
That violates your privacy, and we do our best to ensure that we are providing the best education that meets the individual needs of any child that enters the district, so.
This issue cost a $750,000 deficit at King Philip this year, unanticipated, and we don't have the reserves for that either. We have to apply for an emergency payment on our, you know, a year in advance, as opposed to a year in arrears, in order to cover that. So it's, I wish I knew the answer.
Yeah, at least by requesting that we use half of the funds, it leaves some reserve, which I think I feel comfortable with. It's not a great solution, but it is the best solution in the current economic situation that we face.
It's what it's intended for.
In that case, we would defer to the committee to make their motion and vote. The board will do so after, because we don't do, yeah.
Right, looking for a motion to approve the use of $125,000 out of the special education reserve fund.
I'll make a motion to approve $125,000 out of the special education stabilization fund. To support the 2025 to 2026 fiscal year.
One year at a time, Jen.
Fiscal year. Oh, it's so close.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, just from the school committee perspective?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I will take a motion to the same respect.
I move to approve the use of $125,000 from the special education fund to be used for the fiscal year 25 budget.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And that is unanimous vote. Thank you very much. And actually, before you go, Nick, come up here for a quick sec, bud. Come over here, come over here, right to me and Jim.
I remember Nick from Cub Scouts, Nick knows a lot about town government.
So Nick, can you just quickly introduce yourself and say where you go to school, what grade you're in?
Hi, I'm Nick, and I go to the FK, and I'm in fifth grade.
Nick wrote in an email advocating on the school's behalf because of the upcoming difficult budget year, and identified that he was very concerned about what this meant for programming moving forward, and wanted to know what he could do to help to be able to earn some funds back for the schools. So Nick and I had some incredible conversations, we're going to have more conversations about the budget, but I wanted you to know that you have an incredible group of support behind all of you and everything that you're doing in the schools. One day, when he's a big lobbyist in DC, I'm sure he's going to be able to have even more impact, but this is the kind of support the school committee has been getting in their efforts, and I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what a great job you're doing, and also commend Nick on his engagement.
Amazing. Thank you, Nick, for your support. Much appreciated. Excellent. Thank you.
All right, with that, would you want to adjourn your meeting?
Yeah, I need a motion to adjourn, if anyone is willing.
We'll move to adjourn.
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome to stay.
Not kicking me out, that's for sure, bud.
Not in here.
But a good decision to make.
How's your audience, too? Joe, hi, Joe. Joe is a former student from Foxborough, who went to the Igoe School and is principal, and he is our biggest supporter in the school committee, attends all of our meetings, so is very invested in town government as well, so maybe you guys have something in common.
I attend, I go to all the Foxborough meetings, and then I follow the Norfolk and Norwood Public Schools, the school committee, because I was a student in Norwood before going to Foxborough, when Vinnie Igoe was on the school committee.
Excellent. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you for joining us.
Bye.
Wonderful evening, thank you all so much.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
You're also speaking a lot more.
It's amazing how quickly we lose our audiences towards the end of the evening, isn't it?
Yeah, I know.
Wise decision.
Well, while our room clears out, we'll move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is going to be the Building FY25 Budget Review, Justin.
Yes. Just a quick intro, our building commissioner's here, the select board's been hearing from all the departments about their fiscal year 25 budget. Some departments have, well, has proposed some different fee structures. I think Bob will give you a high level of the budget, but he does have proposed fee changes for the board to consider, and whatever manner it does, but I'll toss it to Bob.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Bob.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
He's yours, go right ahead.
So the budget in the building department doesn't change too much. This past year, I mean, the only difference is usually is just the step increase in the COLA for the employees, the other budget numbers, you know, for the odds and ends of the department pretty much stay the same, you know, for cell phones and office supplies and things of that sort. This year, I did put in for an extra five hours for an admin position. One of the things, the biggest, one of the biggest assets we have in our, in the building department is the software that we have, CitizenServe, which we've utilized CitizenServe, you know, really well. It's all online permitting. It's a bit of a, for someone coming into the department, it does take a bit to learn it, so not terrible. Our admin, Nancy, you know, picked it up pretty quickly, but she's pretty technically savvy, but, so, and with that software, we've actually scanned all of the documents, every permit that we've ever had in the department has been scanned into everybody's different properties. So if we want to do a property search, we can go back to the complete history of that property. So for us, it really holds a great file cabinet for everybody, and everything that we've done in town. So that was the idea of, you know, putting in that extra five hours, that if we could find somebody that, you know, has an interest in the department, that they could, that if somebody leaves at some point, that maybe they would want to move into that position. And I just, I always advocate for cross-training and trying to bring in people that, you know, so when someone, we do have turnovers, that someone could come in and fill that position pretty quickly. But other than that, the department is pretty much the same as it has been. You know, construction seems to be continuing to roll along even with the high prices of everything and we do the best we can to try to keep everybody in line with, you know, building, construction. So, if you have any questions about that, you know, feel free.
Manita?
I do not.
I do not.
Okay.
So I do have just one question for you. I know that one of the things that we've heard about has been the increasing of fees for certain licenses and whatnot as it pertains to building. And I think that those increases were intended to bring us up to par with our neighboring communities. Have you seen anything that strikes you as an outlier or puts us behind in terms of what we're asking for some of these licenses at this point, or do you feel like we're right in line?
You mean permits, not licenses.
Sorry.
Yeah, and I, you know, I was asked to take a look at the permit fees and just see where we stand with them and whether or not it's worth, you know, raising some of them. I did go through them. My electrical inspector went through the electrical permits and we looked at plumbing and gas as well, so, and mechanical. So, I can hand these out to you. I can give you a quick explanation of how these, that I put this together.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, one of the things that, when I looked at this, I, we have a number of towns here that we put, we went to their websites, we pulled up their information based on, all these categories are on the left-hand side of what we categorize for permits. And with those categories, you know, there's different fee structures that different towns use. So, in doing this, I, you know, we really try to separate out permits, you know, exclusively to what exactly they're doing. You know, a lot of towns, you'll just kind of lump it all into one package and, so they don't have a lot of them listed. So we couldn't, you know, fill in every category that Norfolk has. But I just find that for us, you know, especially in an online system, that if you go in there and you pull a menu down, you're going to be able to find exactly what you're working on and, you know, put, you know, go through the permit a lot easier. But when we, when it says ICC square foot, $11 per thousand, the ICC is in the back of your package here, there's a, there's a paper here that the International Code Council, which is the building code that we use for the state, they do a building valuation data sheet every six months to a year. And what it is, is it gives you the projected square foot costs of a project. You know, if it's a R3, which is one and two family houses, and then if it's a wood structure, it's a 5B construction, and it'll give you the exact square footage that the average construction cost is around the country. So, when I first started this 23 years ago, you know, I think it was really within the first two weeks I was here, one guy came in, two guys came in with exact same house. One said it would cost $400,000 to build and the other guy said it costs $200,000 to build. So, in most of these towns, they go by what they say and then they charge them accordingly, $11 per thousand. So that $200,000 cost is going to be $200 times the $11. Whereas the guy who said $400,000, it's going to be 400 times that $11. You know, so it was clear that this wasn't, was a problem. So, pretty much at that point, I had changed it so that we knew what our construction costs were and we put a number to it. But when, about seven years ago, the ICC started publishing this, this document, and we decided to go with that document just because it's, it's a, it's a known agency in the, in the industry. So, we've been following that for about seven years. So, when you see ICC square footage is the construction cost and then it's been $11 per thousand, we looked at the different towns and, you know, we said, well, we could go up to $12,000 if we, if the town wanted to. So, we kind of went through each one of these and looked at it. And if it wasn't a flat fee, which a lot of times we like to do a flat fee if we can, a lot of it is that, based on that ICC ratings. Another point that was a real issue with us is the, on electrical, is these commercial solar projects. They, it's really hard to find, you know, what the actual costs of these things are. And so Peter's done a lot of work on this, pricing it out different ways. And he came up with a price point to say that, you know, if we use this dollar value times how many DC, number of DC kilowatts is on that particular project, now we don't have to worry about what they're talking about as far as price. We can just go by that number and price out the job that way, which makes it a lot easier because you go back and forth with these guys. They tell the public, utility companies one number, they tell us a totally lower number. And there's significant numbers differences. And we're just trying to keep, everything is factual as we can just to keep this, you know, even across the board, no matter who's doing the project. So, those are some of the highlights of it. You know, if there's specific questions, I can go through them with you. You want to digest this, I think we, we looked at, you know, when you look at the last page, I will say that, you know, where it shows what it was in 2018 to build that house for 3,000 square feet versus today at this new, at $12 per thousand. There's a big difference there because the cost of construction is a lot different from 2018 to today, significantly different. The other towns, we don't have what they actually put in for construction costs. You know, these are just random numbers that we had from before and we just kept them. So there wasn't, there is no hard and fast way. I'd like to have it hard and fast, I don't want to be making judgment calls on things, I'd rather have it, you know, if it's this, then it's times this and then it comes out to a permit fee.
Yeah.
Go for it. Bob, I wouldn't nickel and dime any of these fees, you know, they're all reasonably competitive, but for a couple of categories that I'm kind of lost on. The section under, let's get under electrical permits and mechanical permits. I wouldn't know to challenge the fees that you're requiring, but when I look across the list and I see hardly anybody else is making any charges on those fees.
Yep.
That one puzzles me. Why are we charging 250, 325 when all the other towns don't charge anything?
Well, a lot of them will, at the top, they're saying $10 per thousand, minimum $125.
But a lot of them say not applicable.
Yeah, that's because they don't, they don't print out all this stuff. They just, at the top of it, it says minimum sheet metal permit and then they go across and it's $10 per thousand. So, if you have a system that's $15,000 and I can tell you, most of them won't put the real number on, even though we don't follow those numbers, they still put in like $5,000 for a full heating system, which I've yet to see anybody do something for $5,000. But even at $5,000, you know, that's still going to bring that number up in some of these cases, very close to what we have. Not at 5,000, more truer numbers.
So the sheet really doesn't show an apples-to-apples comparison?
No, it doesn't. Not on all of them. Some of them it does, but.
And one thing that Bob had mentioned, sorry to interrupt, is that what we've done is we've been very transparent about what our rates are for all these various categories. A lot of towns are not that same. Well, you can't find to the level that the town has these broken out on these comparable communities. You can verify that, Bob.
So, when I look under energy storage systems, where we have a fee structure and I see nothing across the board for the rest of the towns, that's not necessarily true?
I would say that most of the towns aren't, I honestly, I don't know exactly how they handle it, but I can tell you that the battery systems are really new, but they're very complex as well. We had one down on 15 Lincoln Road that, it took us a long time, that project, it took four years to finally sign off on that project because they couldn't get a UL rating for that trailer that has, I think it was probably 50 batteries inside the trailer, which is, they're volatile. I mean, you hear about all these fires with these batteries, well, they have systems that actually shoot the water right into the battery if there's a problem, and yet they all admittedly say that, you know, this isn't going to stop anything.
I'm not questioning the validity of inspections by any means, Bob. I'm just saying, the intent is for us to be, collect fees associated with the work done, number one.
Yep.
Number two, be sure the inspections are done, that should be number one. But it's also to be in the range of our neighboring communities and not disproportionate expenses equivalent to others. We don't want to be out of reach of the other communities. Is that not true? Isn't that the goal, to be in the neighborhood?
Yes. And it's really hard to, you know, I'd have to call them and say, okay, so how do you handle this specifically?
Just, so the data's not.
Because it's not, it's not being put out there.
But your feeling is that we're in, that those three things are being met?
I believe so. You know, when I look at some of these permitting, like Millis is 2015 was the last time they did their permits. Rantham was 2017, Medfield was 2014, Westwood was 2017, Landville's 2018. So, a lot of these, the batteries weren't even out there at that point and they haven't updated their permit fees at all accordingly. So, you know, they may, they may do it on the fly, I don't, I really don't know.
Okay, you've done the best you can for it, thank you.
So, based on this, are you recommending any changes to our fee structure?
Yes, you can see the two categories there. The first category is where we are today. The second category is where we, where we could go.
Thank you. Well, Bob, I will say that, you know, typically when I ask questions in these forums, it relates back to a comp set analysis and identifying where we lie against our competing, or not competing, but neighboring towns. And you came prepared with not only a full outline of every town with as much data as you could possibly obtain, but you also printed it on big enough paper so that we're not digging through small font. So you, sir, are no rookie. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
I love the big paper.
Any other questions from the board?
No, no, thanks, Bob.
Well, thank you so much, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, one thing before Bob goes and he can, I do want to point out, because we've obviously heard from the schools that, you know, needs as well, Bob's budget is a little different. He said it's kind of the same as before. It is a little bit different. We actually reduced the assistant building inspector to a part-time position, it was previously a full-time position, and we eliminated executive assistant position as well, which we weren't able to fund in this budget as well. So it is a little bit different than before.
Yeah.
And I do want to highlight that.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
I need to just get over one second, if I may.
Go for it, absolutely.
Yep.
I believe our next contestant, Karen, come right off. How are you doing tonight?
Good, thanks, how are you all?
Good, you can sit in one of the cushy chairs if you want to, be more comfortable. You can go right ahead, you can catch them up.
Oh, you want me to walk you in? Okay. So, my budget with the town of Norfolk is basically two expense major categories. One of them is salaries and those cover myself, I'm the one full-time person at the senior center. I have a 30-hour program coordinator and I have two 20-hour, one is our outreach coordinator and one is our morning admin assistant and receptionist. And I think, do you have the numbers of the salaries there in front of you? They're, it comes up to about a?
They do.
Oh, they do?
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions about any of that?
It's under number 7. It's under number 7, honey.
Hi. Hi.
How are you?
Oh, great.
Nice to see you again.
Yes, you too.
Thanks.
I was just saying that I basically have two major parts of the budget, which is, one part is the salaries for the staff and the other is more like operating expenses. So, does, no more question, no questions on the salaries? They told me to start without you.
I have no questions on your budget.
So, I actually brought some information just to tell you where I get some of my other funding in case you were interested in that.
Absolutely.
So, basically, my budget for fiscal year 25 for our, what we call our operating budget, is $9,922 from Norfolk. That is split up basically in supplies, things we need for programs, things we need for activities. And then we have our, my senior center, software, computer system that we use, this comes out of here. And we have a programming budget, that's spent a lot on different events that we have or maybe some programming. And then the last section here is training and development, which is what I call professional development for the staff. So that's my major budget here this year. I also wanted to say, we do operate with a formula grant from the state of Massachusetts, Executive Office of Elder Affairs. And the way that is figured out is they give us $14 per resident that's 60 years and older. And so, at the moment, the 2020 census helped and we now are getting $36,000 annually from the state to run all of our other programming and costs. This year, we actually have the grant, the digital literacy grant, that's running through the rest of fiscal year 24 and then into fiscal year 25. It actually ends at the end of February in 2025. And that was also something from the states. We have the $61,000 for the grant and that was to buy hardware and software and also to provide instruction to increase digital literacy in older adults, which could always use some assistance there. And, oh, actually, that's it.
Very good. Manita, any questions?
No questions, I love those grants, that's amazing, so thank you very much.
Jim?
No, you guys do a great job.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you so much, Karen. I know that we've spent a little bit of time over there over the course of the last couple of months and it's been incredibly enlightening, at least from my perspective. And I do hope that we can continue to meet the needs and address any of the concerns that are out there surrounding the senior community, but from what we've seen up until this point, you've just been doing an incredible job over there. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and we always encourage you to come over and visit us anytime.
Nice to see you.
All right, that does it for our budget reviews this evening, and now we're moving on to our general updates. We'll start off with Justin, what do we have for this evening?
In the board's packet, you have a memo for me just providing an update on the state budget process. The budget currently is in the House Ways and Means Committee. In that memo, I highlight that the budget is a little different than the governor's proposal. I won't go through the big differences, but I will say the net revenue is about $45,000, $46,000 in increased revenue. But one other major component of the budget is the creation of iLottery. And I bring this to the board's attention because iLottery is essentially allowing the lottery system to have online lottery sales, but they are not allocating it to UGA like typically lottery sales have been. They're, they're going to, the proposal is to allocate it to early education. And I think it's important for the board to be aware of that because, you know, I think if you add the online component, it might, you know, result in changes in the actual lottery.
It will.
And UGA for towns. In our current budget situation, I wanted to highlight that specifically for the board. The MMA and the finance committee, which I'm a part of, are trying to advocate to keep it the same, but I really think that's important for the board to know. Also, they're going to begin debate on the budget tomorrow, 24th.
24th, you got it.
And there's two amendments that Norfolk has under consideration, $75,000 for mirror lake, dike and dam vegetation and $20,000 for body cameras. So, I just wanted to highlight that for the board. I will keep you updated as it moves through the process and the Senate will be sometime in May and we'll follow up after that.
Did we also reiterate the importance of support for a prison mitigation amendment?
Did.
Thank you.
Indeed. As we know, Norfolk has had various flows here. As we know, Norfolk has had various flows here, questions, and this is a priority for us.
What's that?
Take a look. That's it, all mine.
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me, Justin. So, for the select board updates, I did just want to note that during executive session earlier today, that we did come to a agreement on the union contracts for the clerical union and for the DPW union, which were both up this year, so, we did want to take a quick moment just to thank Justin and Kate for their work on this to get us over the hump. I know that both unions identified that they felt pretty good about the process as a whole, so we do appreciate everything that you both did to be able to get it to the point, and being able to get those two contracts in place, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other updates from our perspective, I actually don't have any, Jim?
No, I don't either.
I do not have any updates?
Very good, we are updateless for this meeting. I think at nine o'clock, we kind of lose our affinity for additional words. Our next item this evening is the warrants, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the warrants as printed in the agenda.
Second.
Hearing a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Our next item is the approval of minutes, do we have minutes to approve this evening?
We do not.
Then there will be no approval of minutes this evening. And that brings us to the end of our agenda, Justin, anything else for us this evening?
Nope, other than one other update, maybe, be on the lookout for a vast audience on a new taping that we were doing for our community forum, what's the title of the...
Oh, yeah, we'll be recording the latest episode of the Norfolk Community Forum tomorrow as a pre-town meeting episode to get everybody ready for the articles that are being brought forward, including some of the background with a special guest, I don't want to ruin it, but we'll leave it at a cliffhanger, we'll also have a guest with us on the show, so that should be out sometime towards the end of the week.
Oh, I can't wait.
Yes, very exciting. Jim, anything else for the night?
No, no, thank you.
Monita?
No.
In that case, I will quickly read a statement, I'll be really quick, I promise. Tonight actually marks my 201st meeting here on the board. That includes 27 meetings as a member of the planning board, and where I missed one meeting due to a stomach bug, which I think everybody was okay with, as well as 174 meetings on the select board where I missed two, one was for an ACL surgery, where again, on those medications, you didn't want me here anyway, and the other one was due to work travel. You know, barring, this is funny, I say this, barring a catastrophic situation in which there's an emergency meeting of the select board that is required before May 7th, which we just heard that there might be, tonight will also mark my final meeting as a member of this body. It has been an incredible journey serving this community, and it is with a mix of emotions that I bid farewell to this chapter of my life. Throughout my many years of service, I have had the privilege of working alongside dedicated individuals who share a deep commitment to public service. Together, we have accomplished increases in transparency and community engagement in town government, reconciling past capital projects to build trust that would enable the successful passage of overdue initiatives, leading a shift to a proactive focus to properly plan with foresight, and development and alignment on a vision for the future of the town while partnering with our small business community, and I am immensely proud of the positive impact that we have made in our town and its residents. As I prepare to embark on a new chapter representing the interests of our community at the State House, I am filled with excitement and anticipation for the opportunities that lie ahead. In public service, I've truly found my calling, and I'm eternally grateful for the opportunity to continue serving Norfolk and advocating for the issues that matter most to our communities. Mahama Gandhi once said, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." This quote has been a guiding principle throughout my time here in local government, and I am humbled by the opportunity to have lost myself in the service of our town's residents. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you for your support, your collaboration, and your friendship over the years. Your dedication to our community has been an inspiration to me, and I am grateful for the memories that we have all shared. As I take this next step in my journey, I carry with me the lessons learned and the values instilled during my time in town government. I am confident that together, we will continue to make a difference and create positive change for the benefit of all. I want to also thank my fellow board members for your service, your counsel, and your partnership throughout the years, it has been an absolute pleasure serving with both of you, including two stands serving exclusively with each of you at different parts as a two-member board. Thank you so much for being a part of this incredible journey with me, I look forward to the future with optimism and enthusiasm, knowing that our shared commitment to this community will continue to guide us forward. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
That's a hard act to follow. Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? Thank God, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you so much.